So why don't we go ahead and get started? I will call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council of December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two order pursuant to section three of executive order N twenty-nine dash twenty issued by Governor Newsom on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. And so I will ask our city clerk for roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, just a reminder for those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agenda discussion, you can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templecity.us. You should do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment upon. So we will now move on to our invocation, and I know the agenda says that I will be providing the invocation tonight. This is our last meeting of the year, obviously, a year that I'm sure none of us ever expected. And I think most of us are glad to see it coming to an end. But I thought tonight, rather than maybe a traditional invocation, that maybe we could spend the next, you know, fifteen to thirty seconds, maybe as a time of reflection for all of us in our own ways to, you know, gather our own thoughts and maybe, you know, offer a prayer to yourself as far as what you're thankful for and what we'd like to see in the future. I do want to mention, however, that it came to my attention that a couple of our fellow council members and actually mayors in surrounding cities, our new mayor in Almonte, Jessica and Kona apparently has contracted COVID nineteen. And I know that we're, we all know that our Azusa mayor, Robert Gonzalez, also contracted COVID nineteen. And of course, our prayers go out to both of them in those cities and everyone that of course has been affected by this terrible virus. So I'm going to ask everyone for a moment of silence and we'll just kind of, again, just our own reflections and give a few minutes. Again, our prayers go out to all of those out there, not only regarding the pandemic, but everyone who is in need of help these days. There are so many of us that are out there that can use a few prayers, there's no question about that. So, all right. With that, we will move to our Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know if our city clerk's got our flag up there or not, but we all know what the flag looks like, so please place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. My pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States-
...of America and to the republic-
To the republic-
...which is one nation under God, indivisible-
With liberty, justice, and-
...with liberty, justice, and-
...justice world.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for that. I have to share real quickly with you, I think I've mentioned before, every time I say the Pledge of Allegiance, it reminds me of Little League baseball because every game is started with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we missed out on that this summer, but hopefully it'll return next year and we could all, all join in on that as well. So, all right, well, I'm very pleased to announce our ceremonial matter today. We are here to honor a very special person in our community, Corazon de Jesus. And I know that her son, Tom, is on the line with us this evening, and Tom will give you a chance to, to speak in a minute, if you don't mind. But I just want to share a few thoughts about Corazon tonight. Of course, we are recognizing her as a centenarian, okay? Those of you who don't know what a centenarian is, it's someone who has turned a hundred years old. And Mrs. De Jesus was born on March ninth, nineteen twenty. What a, what a fantastic celebration to, to recognize you and to thank you. And it's just, I'd love to sit down with you one day and, and talk about the last hundred years. I'm sure you have a lot of stories. And Tom, thank you for joining us this evening. I've known the De Jesus family personally for a number of years through same roots. Of course, we can see her, great, there you go. Thank you for having and joining us. So let me share a few thoughts, and then, Tom, I'll let you speak, if you don't mind. Miss De Jesus migrated to the United States in January of nineteen ninety-one. She was, she has four children, is a devout Catholic, and even knows how to pray in Latin. So that's, that's a pretty, pretty nice thing to know. In her younger days, she was an active member of the Saint Luke Church. I know we see her at the, at the festivals every year, of course, and, you know, joining all of us and having a great time. She enjoys cooking, or she enjoyed cooking for her two grandchildren, both of whom are married now, and hopefully are cooking for her. And of course, always look forward to going to the Ross Department Store Tuesday specials.
Yes.
I didn't even know Ross had a Tuesday special, so that's news to me.
You got ten percent.
And then Value Mart, of course, for their weekly sale as well. So unfortunately, because of her age, she's now bedridden, but, but she still can, can watch TV. And this is something I didn't know, Tom, we, you and your mom, we share, we share something very special. We love Lucille Ball shows.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know she was a Lucille Ball fan. In fact, during some of my classes at PCC, I, I interweave Lucille Ball television shows into some of my classes, believe it or not. I'm a big fan of Lucille Ball, too, let your mom know. So we look forward to, to Mrs. De Jesus celebrating her hundred and first birthday, of course, in March of this year. So congratulations, please give her a big hug for us. And, you know, we wish her the best and, and continued health and safety. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. So, Tom, if you would just give a few words?
Yes, I want to say thank you to all, to all of you who gave us a chance to share my mom. I don't know whether you remember me, Tom, but I am the-
I do remember you, I know you, yes, of course.
I, I just want to thank you, and I just want to share that my mom was also a guerrilla supporter in the Civil War during the World War II. She used to work with Lieutenant Colonel Nesbit, she's a Colonel, a nurse, and her job there is, you know, boiling all these utensils that they use in surgery and clothes and everything, just like a sanitation during the World War II. So I just want to thank the council and you, Tom, Mayor, and I am, I am excited and humbled to be a part of this meeting tonight of the city council. I want to thank you and wish you all the best. Merry Christmas to you and your families. God bless you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Tom, and the honor is, the honor is totally ours. You know, your mom sounds like she's had a great life, and we, we especially want to, you know, make, send our wishes on to her. And again, you know, all the best to you and your family this holiday period, and enjoy your mom, that's a very special person.
Yeah, that's, that's what I do, you know. I also want to thank you and your wife, Tom, during the time when we were growing our children, she used to give me some, you know, called it the service hours to meet my service hours during the time of growing our children. I want to thank your wife, who is there for me, and-
I'll make sure she gets that, thank you very much for those words.
Thank you.
All right, you, you take care of yourself, okay?
God bless.
God bless you, thank you.
Merry Christmas to all, God bless you all.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, all right. Yeah, here we go. Well, I know it's a tough act to follow, Peter, but we always put you in this position, it seems like. So we'll now move on to item B, we're gonna get a Chamber of Commerce update from our Chamber of Commerce President and CO, Peter Chau, Choi, I'm sorry, Peter, are you there?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Chavez, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead.
Great, fantastic. Look, first of all, who doesn't love Lucy? I love Lucy, and that was lovely to hear. Good evening, Mayor Chavez, council members and city staff. First, again, simply, I hope this evening finds everyone safe and well during this difficult time. The Chamber continues to operate with our staff teleworking from home and meeting individuals in person only when necessary. Since the pandemic started, we have been available and willing to help any member of the business community, whether they're a member or not, taking on a sort of business ombudsman role and attempting to resolve and assist business-related queries and passing them up to the city only if needed. We receive about thirty-five to forty calls a month. As I have noted before in my previous remarks to the council, the Chamber continues our focus on providing the business community, and residential, but the business community the most accurate and up-to-date information regarding COVID nineteen, especially as guidelines and directives, et cetera, continue to change. Our monthly e-newsletter has become an almost daily e-newsletter, and I thank our executive administrator, Fong Mac, for her work there. It's a lot of reading for the both of us. We continue to publish Temple City Life, which was being distributed digitally, until city staff informed us that there were members of our community who are not internet savvy, and so we have been printing five hundred hard copies, which one can pick up at the Kaufman entrance of our building around the first week of each month. Heads up, our February issue will be dedicated to the Camellia Festival, and I have already had conversations with Dawn Tarran about how we may supplement the two thousand and twenty-one event. For instance, putting a centerfold of the car parade route in the center of the paper or photos from past years, we're thinking commemorative issue. Of course, we have been promoting the Camellia Festival in every issue this quarter, and we salute Dawn Tarran and her crew for what promises to be a fun and safe alternative celebration in twenty-one. During the pandemic, we launched a new monthly Zoominar series we call Temple City Today, with guest speakers on topics related to economic recovery. Tomorrow, from four to five, we are excited to welcome L.A. County Assessor Jeffrey Prang speaking on Temple City Real Estate, Temple City Real Estate Update, which will cover L.A. County's real estate market, what we've seen in the last year, what we expect, a detailed overview of Temple City's real estate market and adjacent communities, tax-saving programs available through his office, and legislative developments, including Prop nineteen and two thousand and twenty's Prop fifteen. That's tomorrow, the sixteenth, from four to five. Contact the Chamber office for information in the Zoom link. We have discussed with City Manager Brian Cook and are looking forward to hosting Mr. Cook, Mayor Chavez, and Community Development Director Scott Reamer for a Temple City Update two thousand and twenty-one, I believe in March, before the new mayor is selected. With the new administration taking office in Washington, D.C. on January twentieth, we anticipate a new forceful direction in the fight against COVID nineteen. Who knows, including possible national mask mandates in some form, or even a national stay-at-home mandate, we shall see. Who knows? But we are prepared to help inform the community about the latest developments as they happen, before and after January twentieth. For a brighter change of tone, we did hold our annual awards gala last month via Zoom, and the reviews were overwhelmingly positive. Thank you to Mayor Chavez for joining us in his official capacity, and Representative Judy Chu and State Senator Susan Rubio. Thanks to the Dive Restaurant for working with us to offer a pickup meal with your gala ticket. But of course, the spotlight was, and today remains, on the honorees, all who have stepped up over the past ten months to demonstrate resilience, intelligence, and a positive, forward-looking point of view, proactive and positive. Johnny Nguyen and the Dive Restaurant for being the first to request alfresco dining and leading the way for other city restaurants, for example. Realtor Rudy Kasuma, whose ongoing charity work building schools abroad and donating to L.A. Children's Hospital right here, has expanded to supporting first responders and all during the pandemic. John Dabbler, Inc., one of Temple City's few manufacturing businesses who foresaw the pandemic in January and converted parts of their facility to produce pandemic products like sanitizer gels, bottles of which our gala guests got with their pickup meal. Temple City Coalition for their ongoing work helping struggling families, over fifty percent of the families they help with their services are from Temple City. And last but not least, congratulations to our city manager, Brian Cook, who as the city's emergency executive director, worked with Mayor Chavez and you, the city council and city staff, have guided this city with science, intelligence, and clarity through two thousand and twenty. And I'm delighted that the city and the Chamber have been in sync in how we operate. As I noted during the event, we could easily have decided not to host the gala this year, but we did, and everyone was so happy that we did. It wasn't frivolous, it was pertinent, and most importantly, it brought some sunshine to these dark times. We are all in a tunnel, and the news of vaccines are a glimmer of light at the end of what is still a long tunnel. But the gala allowed us to share some points of light in the darkness, and sometimes that is what we need to muster the energy to continue moving forward. Our final event of the year will be a joint Chamber holiday mixer with the Rosemee Chamber of Commerce, with special guest Senator Susan Rubio. It's this Thursday, December seventeenth, at four o'clock on Zoom. Bring your best elevator pitch. In normal times, speaking of Senator Rubio, Representative Judy Chu, et cetera, in normal times, folks might have wondered how maintaining positive relations with our elected officials helped the Chamber and our members. Well, this year has highlighted the importance of those relationships. For instance, when John Dabbler, Inc. was looking to manufacture sanitizer gels, et cetera, the Chamber reached out to Supervisor Catherine Barker's office for assistance, which we got, and they were great. Before I close this report, I want to take this opportunity to voice strong support for something Mayor Chavez said in his most recent letter to the city. Mayor, you spoke of a new pay-it-forward campaign encouraging stakeholders to commit random acts of kindness. We will be actively promoting this message. I can share that in my own Choi household, we leave a box of bottled water by the mailbox with a sign inviting all delivery people, USPS, UPS, FedEx, Uber Eats, Grubhub, to take a bottle of water. I will also add that if you are like many of us, fortunate to be working from home, then consider tipping. Everyone, I tip, I, everyone, tip everyone. I tip everyone five bucks, whether they bring groceries to my car at the supermarket or deliver a DoorDash order. Every few weeks, I go to the bank, withdraw a bunch of fives. I suppose this is literally paying it forward, and I mention it because there are many other random acts of kindness my wife Donna and I might do, but the point of this is to encourage everyone to think outside the box how you can positively impact another person's life. After all, the unexpected gift is the greatest thing. So yes, the Chamber joins our mayor and calls on all of us to pay it forward with random acts of kindness. Finally, I would like to share what I told our Chamber Board of Directors at our last meeting of the year last week. The Chamber really appreciates that this board has continued to serve the small business community with their most valuable commodity, their time, to help guide our nonprofit organization through this extraordinary historic period. And finally, the Chamber mourns the loss of Board Vice Chair Gerard Atienza, who passed away in October after a long battle with cancer. I was privy to his condition, and we had many conversations over the past months. You know, it, his passing reminds us, as if we needed reminding, that life is precious. And, and that as we enter what has traditionally been a time of merriness and socializing, to hold our loved ones in our household pods a little closer and wear a mask to protect those you love. There is finally some light at the end of this year-long tunnel, and the Chamber will continue to deliver accurate information, support our business community any way we can, and underscore that we will all get through this by coming together, working together, and building the road to economic recovery together. Thank you, Mayor, for this time.
Thank you, Peter, and I want to thank you especially for your weekly updates, the important information that you provide to our community. I read it every time it comes out, and it has a lot of valuable information, as you said. I look forward to the Zoominar tomorrow with Jeffrey Prang. I can remember when Mr. Prang was a council member, I believe, where was it, Hollywood? No?
West Hollywood, yeah.
West Hollywood, that's right, the West Hollywood, years ago, when I first met him at a California Contract Cities Conference, but he's come a long way since then, and he's doing a great job. You know, I'm glad you mentioned Gerard, you know, he was a great guy, had the opportunity to first meet him at a Toastmasters event, he invited me to come and speak, I think it was my second term as mayor, and, and the group was so nice, and I, I know you were there, and, and it was a lot of fun, and we had a great time, and I will miss him, and I hope his, his family is doing well. And lastly, the gala, you did a great job, you pulled it off, I, you know, it's, it's ironic that this is the first gala I've been able to attend in years because of my conflict and schedules between teaching, and of course, here it is, the first time I'm ever able to attend a gala, and I have to do it virtually online, but that's the way it worked out. But it was a great event, I know everybody had a great time, and, and the speakers did a great job, and entertainment, and it just went, I thought, went off without a hitch. So kudos to you and Fong for pulling that together for us and keeping things as, as normal as we possibly can, so. So thank you for all you do, and best wishes to you and your family, and have a happy holidays.
The same from me, the board, the Chamber, to all of yours as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so with that, we will now move on to item number six, public comments not, on items not listed on the agenda. City council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I will begin by asking our city clerk if we have any email requests to speak at this time.
Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Thank you. And do we have anybody on the line that wishes to speak at this time?
There are no callers.
See, our, our meetings are getting quieter and quieter, it seems like, huh? Oh, well, okay. Thank you. So I will close public comments, and we will now move on to item seven, our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
At them.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item eight, our public hearing, adoption of urgency ordinance number twenty-one zero five to you to extend the moratorium prohibiting within the MUC zone, public market uses, and the subdivision of parcels and tenant spaces for six months. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Reimers for his report.
Yes, good evening.
Mayor Chavez?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Very briefly, before Mr. Reimer starts, and Mr. Murphy is here for any questions as well from a legal side, this is based on the direction that the council gave us several meetings ago. And while not on the agenda per se, but also too, because of anticipating that you will be extending the moratorium, some general comments about maybe some general observations that the council has related to a future ordinance, obviously not debating those, but also giving some, you know, and not giving direction per se, but some ideas about where you would go, it would also be appropriate as well during this time, but I'll let Mr. Murphy give you any kind of qualifications as to what that kind of feedback can be.
Thanks, Brian. Here's the way that I, I would probably see this going if the council's amenable. Mr. Reimers will give his report. If any of the members of the council have questions on the moratorium, please feel free to ask those questions. Obviously, it's a public hearing, so we'll open it up for public comment, if any. When it comes back and it's time for council comments, obviously, this is about potential changes of use or potential changes of controls on use in the specific plan area. So if any council member has sort of comments at the thirty thousand foot level, broader areas that you want Mr. Reimers to, to begin looking at, then that, that time, or the time for those comments would be after the public has had a chance to speak. We don't need to get into great specifics, Mr. Reimers will begin his work and then can contact each council member separately, if need be, for more clarification. We will obviously be bringing this back for a study session, when you can really dig into the details, before anything is finalized and then taken through the ordinance process. So again, you know, technical questions, keep those on the moratorium and not on potential changes, and keep your comments about the future at that thirty thousand foot level, and we'll all stay on the right side of the law if we do that. Thanks all so much.
Well, thank you for that instruction. And we will now turn it over to Director Reimers. There you go.
Very good. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Yes, before you tonight is the moratorium that's being proposed. Just as a reminder, for the public, for those who may not have been able to attend prior meetings, back in January, the city council adopted a forty-five-day moratorium, and that was a moratorium that precluded any new public market-type uses and any subdivisions of the land, airspace, and tenant spaces. After that forty-five-day moratorium was approved, the city council provided an additional moratorium up to a full year, so that, that moratorium will come to an end in the, in January two thousand and twenty-one. During that time, the city went through the, or has been through the COVID nineteen pandemic, where we've seen some major changes to land use issues, economic, economic issues and such. During that time, we've also provided some study documents to the city council during a meeting, and it's back in October, and asked the council what direction they wanted us to head in. With that, the council gave us direction to return with a six-month moratorium and use that additional time to come back with some land-specific plan amendment recommendations. So we'll be using the next six months to come back to you with those recommendations and with a study. Also, we'll look at how any recommendations that we offer might affect the city's regional housing needs assessment and housing law in general. The city's going through a housing element right now, so that's actually good timing to go through it. With that, we would expect to come back to council probably in February with a study session. That would give us going to Planning Commission likely in April, and then, once the Planning Commission provides a recommendation, that recommendation will be brought to the council in May, and we hope to get the new ordinance adopted in June, and then that would become effective in July, or perhaps in June. So with that, our recommendation again is to adopt a six-month extension of the moratorium, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Hey, thank you very much. So we'll start with council questions, I'll begin with Councilmember Mann.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
I don't either.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Yu, any questions?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, a simple question, the study session anticipated, would that be for the city council, or is that also for the planning commission? Would that be for the city council, or is that uh, also for the planning commission?
Uh, at this point, uh, it would probably, I'm thinking it would be a city council meeting. And then, um, once the city council gave us some broad stroke, general uh, ideas, um, we could work out some of the finer details with the planning commission.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Vince, you took my question. That was exactly the question I was gonna ask. Is uh, is the planning commission going to be included in this study session? Um, I, I don't know, maybe that's something we should think about further, maybe rather than uh, going back and forth, uh, might not be a bad idea. I know we've had joint meetings before with them, but uh, I'll leave that up to uh, staff to determine what would be the get best course of action on that. All right, so uh, I will now open up our public hearing. I'll ask the city clerk, um, first of all, if there are any email requests to speak on this matter?
Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, and do we have anybody on the line that wishes to speak?
There are no public callers.
Thank you. All right, so I will close the public hearing, and uh, entertain any final council comments. Councilmember Mann?
Uh, I just want to say I, I agree that this, this extension is necessary. Um, as Director Reimers had already alluded to, as well as the previous staff reports that we've um, discussed in past meetings. There's been a lot of changes and shifts in the marketplace, so I think it behooves us to get more information um, and discuss it uh, before we can make an informed decision on this policy net. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
I concur with Councilmember Mann. I think that the past year or eight months, let me do that, this pandemic has really made a difference in what the market um, is seeing as far as investments and, you know, real estate in general. So I, I think six more months will give us more time to just analyze things as um, we hopefully move out of this pandemic. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
I would echo both of those sentiments.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Uh, likewise, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it. I thank you, and I concur with all of you as well. Uh, thanks staff for putting this together and look forward to uh, fleshing this out a little bit more in the future. So thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor Chavez, I will move that we introduce, read by two, and waive further reading and adopt Urgency Ordinance Number Twenty Dash Ten Fifty Two U, extending the moratorium prohibiting within the mixed-use commercial zone public market uses and the subdivision of parcels and tenant spaces for six months, which would be until July seventh of twenty.
Well, secondly.
And can we have a motion in a second? If no objection, Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, uh, we'll then ask our city clerk to please read the ordinance title.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number Twenty Dash One Zero Five Two U, An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of City of Temple City, Extending the Moratorium of the Subdivision of Any Parcel Within the MU Dash C District, The Subdivision of Existing Buildings Into Non-Residential Tenant Spaces And the Conversion of Existing Spaces To Or the Creation of New Public Market Uses For A Period Of Six Months.
You're on mute, sir.
Where's my cup? I didn't see the cup go up.
All right.
There you go.
Your pro tem is gotcha.
All right, sounds good. All right, so uh, item nine, unfinished business, there is none. Item ten, our new business, uh, we're going to hear a report on the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one, first quarter financial status report. Mr. Cook, you want to begin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Uh, Ms. Pacaras, our Admin Services Director, who acts as our CFO for the city, uh, will give a brief presentation. Our first quarter uh, report is, does not reflect of a lot of what has happened per se um, with this COVID impact. But I can, I, if I was to generalize at first, it is not catastrophic. It is pay, it is, uh, it will be a tough year to get through. The first quarter is not the key indicator of where we're going, as you'll see, because most, because we are a property tax-based city. Uh, as the assessor will talk about tomorrow with the chamber, uh, we don't, we, we see most of our revenues captured in uh, the latter part of the fiscal year. So, but there are a few things that we do want to bring to your attention, and um, as we stated, when the pandemic started and when we adopted the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget, we were going to come to you rather than on consent calendar with the quarterly update, but with a brief presentation. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Pacaras.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Um, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. As uh, Mr. Cook mentioned, this will be a brief presentation of our performance, mainly um, basically on our general fund, which is our main operating source. What I'll be speaking about um, tonight is just the first quarter uh, performance of our general fund budget, and then a preview of what the mid-year will look like at the uh, second meeting of January. So as you recall, uh, we adopted the budget in June. Um, the general fund budget um, contains fourteen point eight million dollars of revenues, as well as fourteen point seven million dollars of expenditures. We did have, we do have a one-time expenditure of thirty thousand, which is for the housing element. However, will be coming to you at mid-year requesting to remove that as, as the director, Mr. Reimers, um, has acquired a grant to help pay for the housing element study. And so we had um, estimated a surplus of just under fifty-three thousand dollars for the general fund at the adopted budget um, meeting. However, um, at that meeting, I also had estimated our fund balance of being a little over eighteen million dollars based on the estimated revenues and estimated expenditures. However, with um, the draft of our financial statement for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty, the estimated or the, the fund balance, um, we're looking into that report is just over twenty million dollars, almost twenty point one million dollars. And so we add the budget surplus estimate, we're looking at twenty point one five million dollars at the end of June in twenty twenty-one. So we're in good standing for now. Um, and then, um, so I'm going to go over our revenues. Uh, without the transfers in, we're looking at fourteen million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Our receipt to date as of September thirty is only seven hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. And this includes a one-time um, CARES Act, which is the Coronavirus Aid, uh, Relief and Economic Security Act that was um, passed by the federal government and passed on to the state um, government, um, and it's based on our population. So our total one um, time allocation is four hundred forty-six thousand dollars and change. So uh, if we remove that one-time allocation out, our true um, decrease is almost one half a million dollars, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, thirty dollars. And what comprises um, a majority of that decrease? Um, these are decreases impacted by the COVID nineteen health order restrictions. So because of the cancellation of classes, the events of programs, our recreation fees are down by almost one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Temporary parking permits, because we suspended the enforcement of overnight parking, we're looking at over ninety thousand dollars decrease. Zoning fees, because construction projects have been held off, we did develop for some, and more homeowners, we're looking at almost fifty-seven thousand dollars decrease compared to last year. The other um, fees or revenues that tie to those zoning uh, fees are building permits, and this is also down at almost forty-five thousand dollars. Funds and forfeitures for uh, some reasons down for almost seven, or thirty-seven thousand dollars. And sales tax, believe it or not, because I expected the words on this, um, it's down by twenty-eight thousand dollars. And as you know, it's because of the closures of some of the businesses in indoor dining, although at the first quarter, um, the outdoor dining opened up and, and more businesses were allowed to have uh, more customers at their stores. So uh, we're looking at twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, that also comprises of lower gas prices and, and the utilization of fuel. Um, however, um, I believe this is one of the things that helped offset our losses is the Dayton County Pool Sales Tax. And um, just to give you an idea of how much we've um, received for county, um, or the pool sales tax, our increase is twenty-two and a half percent over last year's quarter. Um, and that's about eighteen hundred and eight, eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars increase. And what this shows is that more people are shopping online. So some of those sales taxes are being remitted, remitted to the state are being distributed to the appropriate jurisdictions. The one good thing um, that's positive during this first quarter is that the real property transfer tax is up, even though it's only eight thousand three hundred, um, but that is a twenty-three percent increase over last year's. This is um, real property transfer tax are the taxes paid by the buyers when they buy homes. Um, it's not currently affected by the COVID nineteen restrictions. Um, in fact, the, the home sales are up only because primarily to the lower mortgage rates. In um, Temple City, um, this is the first quarter and um, that's, the number of home sales have increased. The last, uh, past three quarters have, have been a decline. Um, and then, as you can see, the average first quarter sale price has increased by eleven point eight percent um, over last year, and what that means is um, the average price right now for the first quarter is nine hundred, almost nine hundred sixty-four thousand compared to eight hundred and sixty-two thousand last year. That's a big increase. Additionally, the median um, percent change in the first quarter increased by five point one percent. And what that means in numbers is, um, it's, the median sale price is eight hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars over eight hundred twenty-six, almost eight hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. So um, the lower mortgage rates hopefully continues. One will hopefully continue to increase the sale prices, which means our property tax revenues will also increase. Then briefly, um, and quickly on expenditures for general fund, um, we adopted fifteen point one million dollars. Um, as of September thirty, our expenditures are three point six million, and this is a increase of about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars over last year. Um, primarily, it's the increase in sheriff's costs, but this is also offset by the savings we've experienced because of the pandemic. Um, our personal costs are down specifically at recreation because we had to cancel the programs. Any questions at this point before I move on?
Any questions from council? I don't think so. Go ahead.
So uh, for the mid-year preview, which is in the, the second meeting in January, um, we'll, we'll continue to have challenges with the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, as you know, the surge is happening again, and, and closures or um, outdoor dining has been ordered to stop, although um, that will not take effect till um, it didn't really take effect till the end of November. So we shouldn't see too much of a big drop in that one. Um, we'll see how it goes into January. Um, how the restrictions will continue to impact us. Our sales tax revenues will be down, temporary parking permits continue to be um, non-existent, and our correlated revenues expenditures specifically for community development and recreation um, activities will also be down. Um, and as you're aware, we've had, we have some vacancies um, that are vacant of our former employees into, you know, promotional um, positions. Um, we can continue to have cost savings, although um, it may not be sustainable in the long term, especially with our field employees. So we'll come back to you at the mid-year um, review. And then um, we will also experience the full effect of the, the CARES Act at the four hundred forty-six thousand dollars. And hopefully, that will help offset some of the revenue losses we'll experience. And then lastly, um, I don't anticipate our property, property tax revenues declining at all. Um, again, with the, the current surge in the sales of homes everywhere, um, our assessments or evaluation of our, our properties should continue to increase. And then, which means um, again, a property tax revenue should also increase. And that is it for tonight. Um, I'll fill in any other questions.
Thank, thank you very much for that report. Let's begin with council question. Uh, why don't I begin with Mayor Protem here first?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions. I think it's very clear. Uh, thank you to that Director Paragus. I think it's just uh, have to be a guarded um, situation. We just need to be careful moving forward. Thank you for that report.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
Uh, I thought it was a good report, very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
No questions. Uh, thank you, Susan.
Councilmember Mann?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me open up public uh, comment. Uh, I will ask our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter?
No, Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and we still don't have anybody on the line, do we?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I will close public comment. Any final council comments? Councilmember Mann?
Uh, no, no um, specific comments. I, I do appreciate the report. I, I think it's important and that we keep abreast of um, what, what the impacts are uh, even on a quarterly basis. I, I know there's been a lot of changes, um, not only to our programming side, but also from um, from staffing and operations side. And uh, I know city manager, Mr. Cook, has, has always uh, kept us well in the loop of um, all the little changes that are happening, sometimes on a day-to-day or even week-by-week basis. So I appreciate that. I appreciate uh, uh, Director Paragus for, for your reports. Um, during for moving to the point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
I'm just pleased to see that um, I think we're sitting in a pretty good position in light of everything else that's happening. So I'm just very appreciative of all the work that Brian, Susan, and everyone does to ensure that our city stays fiscally strong.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Yeah, it seems like um, uh, other than the effects of COVID and, and the fact that our, our, our working environment has changed so much, it, it feels a lot like our situation financially within the, the city and, and our management, things haven't changed all that much. It's just that we're staying at home a lot more. So that, that's mainly my comment. I, I'm left with a very comfortable feeling.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I concur everything that's been said, and like I said before, it is a, we need to be very guarded moving forward. But I think a lot of the uh, the reason why we have not been in bad shape is due to the council being conservative, and Mr. Cook, and, and Director Paragus, and, and staff and, and very watchful. And, but yeah, at the same time, we've been very uh, we have not really developed a large appetite for sales tax. So, a- and like Mr. Cook was saying, we're mainly a property tax city. With the exception, perhaps, the sheriff costs had, had gone up uh, in, in drastic ways. I think we're in a pretty good shape, so I'm pretty happy, and thank you for, for the uh, update.
Hey, thank you. Um, you know, a couple of things come to my mind and uh, kind of echo on that, and that is, you know, we've always had a history of being fiscally responsible, and at the same time, getting things done that we need to get done. And I think uh, that's a hallmark of the hard work of staff and, and of course, council, and uh, making sure that our city is on solid ground, and, and those years are paying off, and they. And and those years are paying off and they will pay off in the future, I think. It'll be certainly get us through this difficult situation. One takeaway from the report that I have is if you purchase property in Temple City, you made a wise decision. You have done well with that decision. So hopefully, we can keep that up and, you know, keep a keep it a safe safe place to live and and a great place to live as well, live and work. So so thank you for that. And with that, I will entertain a council motion.
I'll make a motion to, was this to just to approve, even file, right? I'll make a motion to receive and file the report.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no objection, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Hey, thank you for that. We will now move on to item eleven, update from city manager.
I'll be brief, Mayor Chavez. From I, as was Councilmember Mann had stated, the operational update is no different than what I presented to you there at our last meeting. With the surge, we are trying to do our best to operate in the safest manner for our employees and for the public. Mr. Remers and Community Development have done an excellent job of providing online services. And you get a weekly report that shows you how many permits we get and the activities that we have. We did have a small blip of inspections this week, but that should be up and running again shortly. But and in terms of service calls and our recorders system for public works, park maintenance, things seem to be running very well. But again, we are doing it in the safest manner for both the employees and for the public at large. Last week, too, as well, you know, the LA County had a one-time grant program for restaurants. We did outreach to all the restaurants that we could contact in a timely manner, many of whom knew about the program and were trying to were in the system either of it. There were some issues in the prior week with the system that were corrected. So we made sure our our restaurants knew about it. Thank you to Ms. Chan as well for making some of those calls with me, many of those calls with me. And lastly, I want to thank you as the council. There's the executive staff that's on the call with us every and on and with the meeting and our line staff, our sheriff's department, our fire department, and our other community partners like the chamber. I know I did get an acknowledgement I wish I greatly appreciate, but that acknowledgement was a representation of all the hard work, the hard policy decisions that the councils made, the strong direction and leadership they've given, the strong leadership of all the executive staff that are on this call, on on this meeting right now with me. And our staff were just doing a great job every single day, our sheriff's department, our dedicated deputies. Thank you to Lieutenant Ruiz, who's stepping up as acting captain right now as well. Chief Alay, who you don't see as a much fire chief, but is really still making sure that the calls are being made, calls are answered all the time. I do have a mutual friend who's in the fire county fire department, who's part of the the broader medical response for LA County Fire, and they are still responding to calls in a timely manner. And so thank you to all of you for collectively and individually what you've done to get us through a forgettable two thousand twenty. Go ahead. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Update from city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm currently poring over the League of California Cities Annual Legislative Update. The most interesting thing I've found so far are some protections for cities who contract with service providers that sort of avoids the Assembly Bill Five problem, where some of those service providers can be deemed city employees. Doesn't go as far as we wish it did, but at least it's it's more protection than Assembly Bill Five had. There's another provision in state law that may be interesting to some of our homeowners. Any residential project that was approved before March fourth March fourth of two thousand twenty and is due to have its permits expire on or before December thirty first, two thousand twenty one, has an automatic extension by by application of state law for an additional eighteen months. So it's the state's way of of allowing residential projects an additional eighteen months to get built. Nice recognition of what COVID has done to those projects. I'm going to keep reading through that over the holiday and bring back more to you at your first and second meetings in January. And other than that, happy holidays to all.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. We will now move on to item number thirteen. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Are there any reports from anyone? No?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I just want to briefly say, you know, we've been trying to get a joint meeting with the school district scheduled. Unfortunately, as you know, it's can be difficult even in regular times to get that many people to agree on one date and time. But staff is working on it and hopefully we'll be able to accomplish that probably first part of the year. And we'll be able to exchange ideas and see what what the school district has been doing and and of course, share what we've been doing as well. But I know that I know that Brian and Superintendent Fricker do do talk and and are up to date on what's going on between the two bodies. So, all right. With that, we will now move on to item fourteen, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Let me start with Councilmember Viscara.
Oh, which is really this being the last meeting of the year. I want to thank all of you for the support you've given me and putting up with my slow catching up. I'm enjoying it. I'm enjoying working with all of you. Mr. City Manager, thank you very much. And I want to wish you all a a great holiday. And come by and look at my display, by the way. Or my house.
I I didn't see your house on the on the the holiday contest. So was that one of yours? I am not sure.
Not eligible.
You're not eligible, I guess. That's probably right.
I guess not.
Yeah, sorry about that. Well, well, thank you, Fernando. It's been great to have you back on the council. I do miss our our regular breakfast meetings, but perhaps next year we can resume those at some point in time.
I predict you're not that far off.
And by the way, don't you have a birthday coming up soon?
Yeah, now I'm starting to not really recognize that anymore.
You're not recognizing those birthdays. Yeah.
Happy New Year, Zane, for being here.
Yes, I know. I remember. I remember taking him out for breakfast for his birthday around this time, so.
Did you take me out for breakfast?
Well, happy early birthday.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Mann?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I I do want to, you know, also echo Councilmember Viscara's comments. It's it's been a trying year for everyone. And again, this being our last meeting, I do want to express my gratitude to not just everyone from Mr. Brian Cook and all of all of staff working with us through this, providing support, being fluid, being very dynamic and trying to adapt as best as we can to this ever-changing situation. I mean, when this first started back in March and April, we were talking about how, hey, maybe with the summer, we're going to be back to normal. And then here we are in the year and we're looking at another surge. I I do also want to commend, at least from what I can tell, because I'm now officially a parent with a kid in the Temple City Unified School District. They've also had to do a lot of adapting and juggling with the remote learning. If you want to know what chaos looks like in the first two weeks of remote learning, just look at what kindergarten is like. But but they've they've come a long way. They've come a long way. They they everybody knew it was going to be hard the first couple of weeks. The parents, parents had to step up, all the teachers had to step up. And and they they've done a great job at at keeping everyone safe. I mean, you you get materials that you have to pick up every month, but they organize it where you could drive by the schools and and pick it up. So 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 they've they've had a lot of their own challenges as well. So I I do appreciate what what they have to deal with. I I also want to say I enjoyed the work our Parks and Recs folks did in the holiday decoration contest. I know we don't know the results yet, but I saw the pictures of all the houses in the different parts of our city and glad to see that people are trying to maintain a sense of normalcy by keeping with the holiday traditions or burning out all the delights. I know one of my neighbors on my blocks, he he goes all out every single year, so it's it's good to do that. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a great, great holiday season, stay safe, stay healthy, and let's let's survive the surge together.
Hey, thank you very much. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes, just like to say that if there's anything I learned the past year through this pandemic is just how important relationships with our colleagues and the people that we work with and our friends and of course, our family and loved ones are. And I think sometimes when we're so busy, we sometimes don't take a step back and really look at what's important in our lives. And I'm very grateful for all of you. And I I just feel so lucky that even in these difficult times, I'm able to provide service to a city who has really stepped up to the plate. Our school district, our sheriff's department doing, you know, our virtual meetings, Kiwanis Club, the Camellia Festival Group, the Women's Club. Everyone has just our Chamber of Commerce gone above and beyond what is easy and really have, you know, stretched their imaginations and just really made things possible and very bearable. So I'm just really grateful and proud to be able to work for this city. And of course, I want to thank you, Brian. You make the day in and day out of our city function as best as it can under circumstances as difficult as these. So just a big shout out to all of you for all the work that you do. And I know that each and every one of you have the same passion for service to this city. And I think of you all as great servant leaders. So thank you, and it's going to be a better year next year.
Thank you, we hope. Mayor Protem, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo everything that's been said. I think in particular, you know, I I am grateful and I'm happy and to be proud also for all the city staff that we have, starting from Mr. Cook all the way down. And also in particular, also one of the things our sheriff's department and and Lieutenant Ruiz, please take the message back. I mean, you guys out there on the front line touching, you you guys, I mean, I've seen how you guys go into action because I also work for the county. I mean, you guys are just incredible, along with our public health and healthcare folks out there. And, you know, putting yourself on the line, not only just the job is dangerous enough. And then now you have to deal with COVID as well. So one of the reasons to thank and please let your folks know back in the station and our fire folks as well. Thank you for all that you have done. But, you know, while the year may be a tough year, I I also, I think I'm blessed to see, I mean, like I've been recorded, how everybody stepped up to the plate and really, you know, take this service to the community as your mission. And, you know, you all treated this as the time that why we're here as public servants. And I'm glad and I'm proud to see all that happening. So while twenty twenty might be a tough year, I think it gives us hope. If we can do on twenty twenty, we're going to do better in twenty twenty one with the hopefully soon enough the COVID virus behind us. So at at this point, we also want to wish everybody a happy holiday and be safe and be healthy out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vince. You know, who would have thought, you know, it's in some ways, the year has gone by so fast and in some ways, it's gone by so slow. It's it's been in to say the least, a very interesting year in many, many ways, one that hopefully one day we'll look back on and say, wow, you know, I survived twenty twenty, right? But of course, we know it's been very difficult. And one thing that comes to my mind, or one word I think that comes to my mind through all of this and through your comments as well tonight, and that word is leadership. And I have never been more proud of the people in this city who have stepped up to the plate in so many different ways and exhibited that leadership. You know, my colleagues on the city council, of course, I, we've been together for a long time now. And, you know, we we've, I I remember we used to use the term, we we sometimes disagree, but we're not disagreeable when we do that. And and it makes for a good council, it makes for a good governance. And and I appreciate all of you and and the leadership that you have brought to this council and to the city. You know, it's it's just been just been fantastic. And I will always look back and remember that, you know, we all, we all did our jobs and we did not shy away from them. And and we, you know, we have the best interests, I know, of the city in in our hearts. Brian Cook, you you have been obviously an exemplary city manager throughout the year. I think I've mentioned before that Brian and I talk every day. Okay, we we just touch base every day and I'm sure sometimes he gets tired of me and I get tired of him, right? But but we 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 talk and we 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 are all on the same page. And and Brian has showed a leadership, you know, beyond question, not only in how he deals with the city council, but but also staff. And and of course, our staff, our department heads, many of whom are with us this evening and join these meetings and listen to what we do and how we do it. I know sometimes it can be frustrating. Sometimes we we make decisions that don't always, you know, coincide with what's going through your mind. But but we always take that into consideration. And I just want you to know that we do appreciate the time, the work that you have done. And and of course, you are all professionals and you take your jobs very seriously. But also, at the same time, I have a heart for the city as well. You know, our you don't, you don't often say good things about lawyers, but I can say that our city city attorney, we have a good one. We have not only a a great legal mind, someone who is able to explain things to us very in in terms that make sense, even even to me, an attorney, okay, sometimes. And and Greg, you know, not only do you do that, but you're a great guy as well and you're very calm and you're very reassuring. And I tell that to your dad all the time I see him, but he probably doesn't tell you either, but but, you know, thank you for everything you've done this year. To our sheriff's department, our fire department, Lieutenant Ruiz, thank you for coming this evening and stepping up and 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 filling in. And, you know, as as Vince said, you know, take back with you to to our deputies, to all who work for you, our appreciation and and thanks for all that you guys do in keeping our city safe. You know, it's a big part of what's great about Temple City is the safety that we enjoy. And a lot of that has to go to to your your credit. So thank you very much. You know, it's it's just, it's been a good year, you know, I I I know. you know, it, it's just, uh, it's been a good year, you know, I, I, I know it's been difficult. But the way I look at it is I'm proud of the way everyone stepped up. All our departments, our Parks and Rec program is, as some of you have mentioned, has gone above and beyond and, and have kept things as normal as they can. And I can't be more proud of, uh, Mr. Matsumoto and everyone who works for him as well and all the things that they've done, you know. But for the mask and the empty restaurant, empty restaurants, you know, you wouldn't really know what was going on in Temple City, right? Everything is, is kind of normal, really. I mean, we've got good, clean streets, uh, trash is getting picked up and, uh, you know, things are kind of going according to plan. But, uh, you know, we, we, we do, we do what we have to do. Um, just to touch on, on William's point about the youth, uh, you know, I want to, uh, today, Peggy and I, uh, dropped off some little holiday baskets to our youth committee members, and it was nice to see them again. And, and a lot of them were very appreciative of everything that we've done in the city and, and, uh, I, the, most of them said to extend their wishes to everyone tonight and, uh, happy holidays. And of course, uh, uh, you know, they're, they're, they are dealing with, with a lot of the stuff that we've talked about and, uh, but they're doing well. And, uh, so, so thank you to them. So with that, uh, let's see, I told, uh, I told Cindy we would be out of here by eight-thirty. We're almost there, eight forty-two, so not too bad. So, um, happy holidays to all of you. Stay safe, stay healthy. And, uh, you know, just, uh, we're looking forward to two thousand twenty-one, I think, all of us. And I know it's going to be a great year. So. With that, uh, I will now move on to item fifteen, uh, additional public comments not listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests to speak at this time?
No, Mayor, no email request.
Okay, and do we have any, um, anyone on the calls?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, um, last item sixteen, yes, I'm sorry. Somebody say something?
Do we ever get an email, uh, an email message or request? I don't think I've heard one since I've been.
Uh, I can't, I can't, like, yeah, we have gotten a couple of them, uh, on item agendas, yeah. Yeah, but it's been a while. I think, uh, I think even our public has, uh, grown, uh, grown tired of, uh, the way things are done now. And, uh, we're all looking forward to get back into the council chambers where we can have people screaming and yelling at us and, uh, you know, um, you know, doing things and but, uh, we all miss that, I think. But yeah, it's, uh, it does, we, I think we all miss the public as well. It's, it's, yeah. All right, well, with that, uh, we are adjourned. Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, um, you know, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, all those things to everyone. And, uh, we'll see you next year. All right? Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.